Councilmember Terry.
Oh, I see her.
Yes.
Yay.
That was spooky.
Okay, Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Mayor Sander?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, would you read the Metro Cable TV television announcement, please?
Yes, I will. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, April 9th at 9:00 a.m. and Tuesday, April 14th at 6:00 p.m. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right, very good. We are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and have an invocation. Let's see, who would like to lead the pledge? Bob, would you lead us in the, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Tara will lead us in invocation?
Ready? Go ahead. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we all work together to get through this unprecedented medical emergency in our midst, may we all bind together and think of those who are sick from this virus and offer them our prayers and know that we're all in this together, and we'll stay safe if we all care about each other and work as a team together. Amen.
Excellent. Thank you, Tara.
Okay, we have a rather unusual meeting here, and it probably bears a word of explanation about how we are organizing ourselves. So, the governor issued an executive order N-29-20 a couple of weeks ago, and it's a resolution declaring the existence of a local emergency related to COVID-19. It was adopted by the city of Rancho Cordova, and so as a result of that, we are providing alternate ways of being present at our city council meeting. So, this meeting is being made available to the public through Zoom, and the instructions for logging on to that meeting are available on the front of our agendas for the meetings. There's also a way, as I understand it, Stacy, to contact us or to be present in our meeting by phone.
Yes.
We are also accepting public comment before the meeting, and we are allowing, obviously, people to join during the meeting. So, we'll have to make perhaps some special accommodations for either comment or repeating this information or something else as our meeting goes on. For those of you who are joining our meeting virtually, members of the public, we're asked to submit public comment by email to the city's clerk, to the city clerk. We ask that you do that at 3:00 p.m., your commentary on the day of the meeting, so that there's time to process that and get that to us here in this location. And if there's a better way to do that in the future, we will work on that. So, other than city council members and staff who are here with us tonight, we have virtually no one in our audience. It's not to mean you are no one out there, but just very few people. And we're gonna have microphones generally muted. We have two council members tonight who have joined us virtually. We can see when they raise their hands, we can hear from them verbally. This is Zoom that we're using as well for that.
Yes.
So, we think all that'll work. We just took attendance and that worked. We'll be voting in a little bit in a similar way. So, fingers crossed. I want to thank staff for their enormous efforts to make this work in this, this emergency that we're all going through. I'm really proud of everybody in Rancho Cordova, everybody in this room for the work you're doing. And with that, is there anything you need to add, Stacy?
No.
Cyrus, about how we organized ourselves for this. All right, very good. We are moving on with presentations, and first up, we are recognizing Councilmember Budge's birthday. So, Linda, we so wish you were here. There's steak, there's lobster, there's cake. We got a cater dinner in the next room. I'm making it all up. But we do, we do miss you. We'll have to do something when we get back to more normal order of, of business to recognize you in person.
I protest the whole thing.
That, or we're gonna have to do some sort of a Zoom-based happy birthday song. Is anybody up for that, or is that too scary?
No, we should do it.
Should we do it?
It's scary.
All right. Everybody mic up. Donald, that might mean for you to mic off. I can't remember. Can you sing?
Yeah, please don't.
No, I'm scared of these machines.
All right, Linda, get ready. Here it comes.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Linda.
Happy birthday to you.
Excellent.
She's unmuted. Hold on. Wait for it.
She's, she's speechless. It's...
That's awesome. All right.
Okay, so, so I've had birthday celebrations in interesting places, historic places, whatever, but I have to say, this goes out as history, as the only virtual birthday reality greeting in the world. Thank you all.
That's good, that's good. We did make some history there. I don't think we've ever done that before. All right, we are moving on to public comment.
You are muted.
Apparently not me. Someone is muted. That might be Linda just muted herself. Public comment, if you're attending the meeting via Zoom or telephone, you would like to speak under public comment. We will be accepting public comment by email, but we do it again. Encourage you to do it by 3:00 p.m. before our meeting or on the meeting date. Okay, anything else we need to do at public comment on this time? We don't have anything submitted?
We do not have any public comments submitted. Anyone who is in the room with us, obviously, can share public comment, but we are not taking public comment via video conference.
Correct.
Or by phone.
We are gonna move on to council reports. Mr. McGarvey.
Yes, I'm just going with the Sacramento mosquito that's control district is another of the extremely needed special services today, so the people are still working there. They're still trying to control the mosquitoes. You can't ever stop them all, but one of the other viruses is the West Nile virus, and that's still around. It's not on TV anymore, but it's still in everybody's backyard, especially if you have any water standing. So, be sure you get rid of all that. Like, today, this afternoon, you got more rain. So, when you get a chance, go check your backyard and everything and make sure there's no water there for a long period of time. We're working on the Veterans Resource Center of America, the Veterans Housing Development Corporation supervisor, Don Montoli, owner of congressional leadership, is seeing if the construction still needed for the Mather Veterans Village can be completed sooner than most said. As usual, there are always items that take funding resources, but there are, maybe it'll slow down a bit, but we also have some people who are working on it to get it done in the next five or six weeks, and that would be great, because they're talking about not even till this fall. But I think if they get this done as they hope, and if they can get the congressional leadership, get some construction funding with that, that'll be done sooner. So, you'll have 50 more veterans off the street in the Mather Veterans Village. And I'd also like to close the city council meeting tonight in honor of Josie Steelman. She died of coronavirus. So, she's done so many great things for the Rancho Cordova. She was on the school board for 12 years. She's done just so many things. So, I'd like to close it in her honor.
Very good, Bob. Okay, who's up next? Linda? She can unmute herself.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
We're good.
The only virtual meeting that I have participated in was regional transit, and same circumstances as today. And fortunately, thanks to the fact that, number one, it is a, it is a critical service, but number two, there we go, but number two, their, their public relations people, their communications people are really doing a good job to let everybody know what the schedules are. They have done a lot to keep the equipment clean. They have now created protective barriers around the bus drivers so that people have a way in which to pay their fare, but on the other hand, not necessarily come into contact with the bus driver, and everybody is asked to enter the bus through the rear door as opposed to the front door unless they need the accessible lift ramps. This morning, I played a funny version of Doorbell Ditch because our, our youngest granddaughter turned 13 today, and in order to get her her birthday present, I had to run over and leave it on the doorstep, ring the doorbell, and run back to the street. So, that was my version of interesting accommodations. And I totally second Bob's request to close the meeting in honor of Josie Steelman. And I'd actually like to add a couple of other people to that, because for whatever reasons, this has just been, it's not that they succumbed to this evil virus, but they just happened to leave us, and they're important members of the business community. For instance, the gentleman who co-founded Tri Tool in the, back in the early 70s, he was actually a doctor, and he and a group of people, I think he was a PhD because he was an engineer, no, actually, he was a doctor also, but he and some other people co-founded this engineering and manufacturing tool, which we know today as Tri Tool. And then a very gregarious gentleman named John Honsy, none of these people we've ever heard of, but he and his wife founded California Backyard, which everyone knows and is here in the Cordova community. And then David lost a neighbor, Lilias Blomberg. She and her husband were the owners of Blomberg Windows, and she worked on a lot of Parkway efforts, such as the FBI Nature Center, and that's how I knew Lilias. And then a lady whose husband was the fire chief here in Rancho Cordova for years, Shirley Macbeth. Her husband was a World War II vet who was B-24s and passed away some time ago, but, but Shirley just passed away this past week. And so, I would add those four people, and for staff, I'll get you the correct spelling of their names. Thank you, David.
What was the gentleman's name from Tri Tool? I can't recall. I've met him.
Wernette. Yeah, Dr. Wernette, W-E-R-N-E-T-T-E.
That's right. Yeah, we gave down a little bit as PhDs.
Yeah. Both he and Lilias Blomberg were 94, and we think Shirley Macbeth was 95. So, it's a wonderful generation we're losing.
Lives well-lived. All right, anything else, Linda?
No, thank you, David.
Donald, you're up next.
Thanks.
There you go.
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're good.
Um, so I think the first thing I would bring up is we had probably the most, like, formative or like, the most information we've ever covered with Elk Grove Unified in a two-by-two, in the history of two-by-twos. Usually, our conversations are all around developing a high school, developing the next elementary school, developing the middle school, where homes being built, that kind of stuff. And lo and behold, there was a lot more to talk about this time. As the first school district to close in the region and arguably maybe the state, it was very interesting and eye-opening, and this was a couple of weeks ago by now, of why they did it, what their plan was, what some of their challenges were. David, I shared that with you too, that we learned that one of the reasons that schools have not started programming for, for distance learning really came under the IDEA Act, which is the Special Ed and Students with Disabilities Act, that basically prevented schools and actually had school districts actually tell teachers not to teach or contact their students until they figured out a way to deliver education to all students. So, in the absence of being able to figure out how to, how to educate some students, no students were allowed to be educated at all. So, we can add that to the list of things that we need to figure out. One, how to see this coming, but on the flip side, figure out where the red tape is actually harming some children because they couldn't figure out how to help all children. That was kind of the most eye-opening thing. There was an area district meeting. It came off in record time. I believe we were, we were all on Zoom, but I want to say it was seven minutes long, so not a lot to report there. That's probably it for me for now.
That's amazing. All right, Garrett.
All right, since we had this last, we had a Measure A, a vote on council. We had 575 people call in with dissent, and Rancho Cordova did not, is one of the three cities that didn't vote to approve the, the payroll tax increase. And mostly, I can't do it because I can't have a tax increase go through right now when our city is getting crippled.
Sales tax.
A sales tax increase in any way, shape, or form that hurts, because Rancho happens to have one of the largest business districts, and as a business owner that's crippling on staying alive through all this, the last thing we want to do is add more sales tax to us. In any way, shape, or form, if we can give any handouts to help out right now, that's the most critical. Enjoyed the two-by-two. I actually, you know, it's weird doing two-by-two by phone, but I'm with Donald. We did get a lot done, and there's a lot of people that are trying to step up to try to help out our kids, and a lot of teachers. I mean, I heard a story right now where a kid, teachers in Anatolia area were trying to sneak back into school to make copies of curriculum and go to a park and just leave them there due to social distancing and say, hey, everyone comes at a certain time, pick up your packet and take it home, because they want our kids to keep getting educated. And you really see the difference between those teachers that are trying to go above and beyond. I mean, even during social distancing, when I'm walking my kids or riding bikes, the teachers come up and say, like, is there anything we can do? We really want to help out. And so, it's good to hear that when you're a Rancho teacher, you really step above and beyond. And the last thing is, I just want to give a thank you to the Religious Council. The Religious Council of Rancho Cordova was tilted up for, I mean, literally for causes just like this, where they can come alongside and all the churches come along. And I know Cyrus and other people have reached out to them, but the way they're starting to step up and help out with food, or delivery, or prep, or money, or just being that person to go to the people that are unserved is amazing right now. It's good to see that Rancho very quickly coalesces around itself and protects ourself, and, and we're doing a lot of amazing things right now. So, our citizens, be strong. Know that the city's behind you and our churches and our group. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Garrett. Well, there's been a lot of unusual activity, I would say, since our last meeting. I'm gonna try to be brief in my report, but there's a great deal of odd things going on. So, GSAC had a virtual board meeting, Greater Sacramento Economic Development Council. It was pretty successful. We actually talked about some local businesses that are doing extra things, trying to capitalize or survive in this, in this odd environment that we're in. There have been some good discussions that have led to some nice results. We've had, I've had discussions with the principal of Cordova High School and with the school superintendent about operational issues there and how they were handing out laptops, for example, or Chromebooks, I guess they are, for students. Very impressive, their response to this. I'm, I'm happy with those interactions. We instituted a Rancho Cordova leadership call. First one was a week, week ago, roughly, last week. And basically, that's just the executives of the Park District, the School District, the city, the Chamber, Travel and Tourism, Cordova Community Council, each of whom gave brief reports, talked about what they were doing and what the gaps were, what they were worried about. So, I think we'll keep doing this. Another one scheduled for tomorrow, is that right, Cyrus?
On a weekly basis, right.
The idea is to keep that short, tight meeting, but it was, it was a very fruitful discussion, because people of the different agencies didn't automatically know, weren't keeping up with what their peers were faced with or challenged with. So, that was a very good discussion. I've been on countless conference calls. US Conference of Mayors, National League of Cities, League of California Cities. I've been on conference calls with the White House in innumerable scientific forum and discussions, and with the county. And all of those somehow revolve around my role here as, as mayor, but many of them also rely on the fact that I'm a virologist. So, it's sort of a blurring of the two worlds I never imagined would quite come together like this in, in this role. But, you know, in all those cases, with a couple of exceptions, people are handling this in a very responsible way and talking about positive outcomes as opposed to just being partisan or just being negative. And there are a few that were disturbing to me. I have seen some actions by the US Conference of Mayors that I, I do not appreciate. I don't think they're helpful. They sound more like rants than policy discussions, and I've let them know about that. National League of Cities or League of California Cities has not gone that route, so I appreciate that. We've had a lot of, of video communications go out. I think I've lost track of how many I've recorded. It must be six or so, plus a couple of children's book readings. If you haven't done one of the children's book reading, I urge you to do that. Our communications department with Maria is doing an outstanding job of putting information out for our residents. I get so many kudos for the good work our city staff is doing here. It's, it's really amazing. Every single day, our goal is, and I think we've succeeded, at putting out some sort of information that's helpful to our residents and keeping them right on top of this crisis that we're in. And so, I think we are, we are meeting that goal every day, and as a bonus, we're being creative and doing stuff that you don't see any other local jurisdiction in the, in the Sacramento region do. So, I think Maria and her crew and Cyrus, all of our city staff deserve a lot of praise for that effort that's going on, that's making us look, if anyone's comparing notes right now, making us look really, really good compared to the, compared to some of our competition in the region. So, kudos for that. And there are so many great stories happening in Rancho Cordova, and I think we're telling some of them through that mechanism I just mentioned, whether it's the Cordova Community Council organizing mask sewing, or the fact that Mitchell Middle School found a way to distribute sewing machines to the students who were in a sewing class along with materials so those students could take it home and sew their own masks, or whether it's a coach at, at Cordova High School who's able to make contact or help train kids who want to be trained in a practice that's virtual through Zoom, where you've got a whole bunch of kids out in their driveway. I have photos at my household how this is playing out. It's, it's an amazing thing how people are adapting to this. I'm really proud of, proud of Rancho Cordova and proud of everyone who's been a part of that, that positive conversation. So, that is my report. Cyrus, you have a city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of my activities, as you can imagine, have been focused on dealing with this health crisis, and we have prepared a fairly comprehensive report for you, and I will save my comments when we get to item 12.2. Thank you.
Very good. We are going to go on to consent calendar items. Item nine on our agenda. Consent calendar items consistent matters deemed routine and uncontroversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to pull? And these are items 9.1 through 9.3.
Seeing none. David, I will move approval.
All right, motion by Budge, seconded by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to consent public hearings. Item number 10, consent public hearing items consistent matters deemed routine and uncontroversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. And we are talking here about item 10.1.
And?
And 10.2.
Yes.
There we go. 10.1 and 10.2. Does anyone wish to discuss one of those items? Seeing none, I'm open to a motion.
Move.
I'm gonna open the public hearing.
Did you? Yeah.
I'm gonna close the public hearing since we have no comments. So, I think I heard a motion for Mr. Terry.
Second.
There's a second from McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to item 11. There are no public hearing items. Item 12 are regular calendar items, and we have an item 12.1.
Yeah, David, before we, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Okay. So, I'm gonna need to recuse myself. My employer is an active participant in the LIFT program. I consider that to be a conflict of interest.
Okay. You are recused. All right, staff, report.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. On March 19th, Sacramento County issued a stay-at-home order in the wake of the COVID-19 crisis that requires residents to stay in their place of residence unless performing an essential duty, and further prohibits businesses deemed nonessential from operating during this time, which is having a significant impact on Rancho Cordova business community. In an effort to mitigate the, to attempt to mitigate the immediate financial impact to the local business community, the city is proposing that it partner with LIFT Investing to direct city funds to a COVID-19 emergency investment and relief program. This program provides a framework for the city to direct investment accounts into locally headquartered banks and credit unions that will then make loans to local businesses. The proposed program before you this evening would direct $1 million of city investment funds to the COVID-19 emergency investment and relief program. These funds will not earn any interest while on deposit with the bank or with the program, but will be fully collateralized pursuant to federal, state, and local guidelines. Participating banks will make all reasonable efforts to direct 100% of these funds to businesses within the city of Rancho Cordova that have been negatively impacted by the COVID-19 crisis. Program lenders will provide new loans to new and existing customers, which may include loans with three-to-six-month principal and interest deferrals, as well as low interest rates due to the fact that the banks are not being required to pay interest on the city's investment. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Questions? This is very similar to the LIFT program that we're already engaged in. In that case...
You are muted.
We do actually get an interest rate, but in this fiscal environment that we're in, these funds in an alternative location aren't gonna be earning much in terms of interest otherwise.
We are earning probably around 1.4% right now.
Okay, hold on a sec.
Oh, Linda, you're back.
But I can't hear you guys.
Sorry, we just heard that some of us muted. That must have been you. She's not hearing us at the moment.
You are unmuted.
Okay, now I can hear you.
All right, there's something about the mute that's a little crazy there. All right, but as you were saying, we actually are earning like 1.4%, we think, on deposited funds elsewhere.
Right now, approximately, but it's dropping dramatically with each passing day, so...
Yeah, when the, when the feds got a 0% rate out there, it's hard to, hard to get your 1%
Correct.
In competition with zero. Okay, so I don't view this as a, as a major financial loss for us. There is no principal risk, as I understand it, very similar to the LIFT program, but this is a way we can do something to positively impact businesses in our community as long as they are creditworthy enough to, to get through the, the process at one of these local banks. I view this as something really positive we can do. It's probably not nearly enough if you look at the, the financial situation out there globally, but we don't have the resources to fix everything. We do have the resources to do something like this that might make a critical difference for a local business. So, I am, I am all in favor of this particular program, and since we've already done something like the LIFT program that's very similar, it seems to be a no-brainer to me. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question. So, and I completely agree with, with everything you said and the wisdom of doing this. But I do have a question. Is there any, is anybody aware of anything that will help the individual who is a business owner, working for themselves, does not have... owner, working for themselves, does not have any employees, so they don't they don't qualify for any of the payroll protection plans or anything like that, but if they're not actually working, they're not making any income, so is it, does it make any sense for them to apply for a loan like this, or is there something else out there that might be better that somebody is aware of?
That is a good question. I'm looking at MICA. I don't know if MICA's got a good answer for that. I don't think this particular program would work for that individual because this requires sort of a going concern with with regular financials and a demonstrated impact by by COVID. MICA, are there other alternatives for that situation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, MICA runner. There are some programs that that exist out there for the independent contractor that you're seeing come out from the federal government and even some that you might see from the state side, and so we'll talk about that a little bit later. And actually, part of what we'll update the council on later is finding resources to help people navigate that process and not just being kind of just the vehicle by which helping people get there. So we'll talk about that a little bit later as well.
Super. Thank you, MICA.
All right. Other comments on this? Seeing none, I am open to a motion. And again, we have no public comment on this item, correct?
Correct.
To make a motion to approve this resolution.
Item 12.1.
Right.
Very good. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
There we go. Excellent.
Councilmember Terry.
Recused.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
And Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us to our last regularly scheduled item, item 12.2. And Cyrus, I think this is a report from you about the city's COVID-19 and coronavirus response.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council. First of all, let me start by thanking Mayor for acknowledging the work that has been done by staff in this crisis, during this crisis. As you can imagine, since the county order was issued on March 19, we have been very busy, and I'm very proud of our city team who has been working tirelessly to deal with the issues in the aftermath of the current crisis. We have done a lot of work. We have been plugged in with many of the work that's happening at the federal, state, and local level. And the example, the item you just approved related to LIFT is is an example of us being proactive and being out there trying to do our part to help our business community, to help our residents. And this is just an example of many, many other activities and efforts that we as a city team have undertaken. So the purpose of tonight and tonight's presentation is to give you a very high-level overview of the work that we've done, both at the operational level, but also some work that we have done related to partnerships that we have created with the members of our community, with our nonprofit organizations, with our partner agencies, to help our residents and our businesses to navigate during this very difficult time and the times that everybody can attest that's unprecedented and something that we, none of us really has experienced. So at the very high level, I would like to start by saying that the county, we have activated our emergency operations center at Level 3. The county has also activated its operations center at Level 2, since they are primarily responsible for the health office, so they have decided to go to Level 2. What that means that we have our staff available 24 hours, seven days a week, to deal with any issues or questions or topics that may come up related to the current crisis. We've also been plugged in with the work that the county is doing. County is actively working on housing homeless, and a presentation to the County Board of Supervisors is planned for tomorrow, where they come up, they would identify some of the specific measures that they will be taking related to housing of the homeless. At the operational level with the city, I would like to highlight for the members of the community who are watching this or hearing this, that we are the as clearly as a as an essential facility, we are open, both the city hall and and the police station, our police station are open for business. However, we have modified some of our business practices and are asking our residents and businesses to try to do the work as much as they possibly can, online or by phone or by appointment, to minimize the interaction to our staff and and to protect their own health and safety and also the health and safety of our staff. However, none of our business practices have been affected by the work we do, and the work goes relatively uninterrupted. Give you, we've modified, starting with the police station, we have modified some of our hours, some of the work that we do related to towing, parking, and and some of some of the non-emergency work, that we have limited some of those hours, and we ask that our customers to be calling, to call in advance, make the appointment for those services. We're also asking and have directed our police officers and our patrol officers, our CSU, and and our pop and hot officers to be very visible in the community. In fact, they have increased the number of patrol trips throughout the community, and we definitely have a presence that can be seen and hopefully that you have seen that in the community. I have some interesting factors that Chief Pittman shared with me that I would like to share with the council. So and I read this is the weekly calls for service during this crisis have decreased approximately 23% since the crisis has been since the stay-at-home order was issued. So you can say that that, you know, because we did not know what the impact would be, whether we would see an increase in service calls or not, but just to show you that we have in fact had had a decrease. And and we have had approximately a decrease of about 29% over the last two weeks compared to a year ago this time. So 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 clearly, things have quieted down by people staying at home. We're also, RCPD is also monitoring burglary, domestic violence, robbery calls, and and those are no, and there has not been any significant increase or change in those type of crimes. So they they remain relatively unchanged compared to a year ago. And and basically, one of the concerns that we wanted to be sure that in the aftermath of this crisis and some of some of the stresses that people are going through, whether this will be affected or not, and and the information that we have today, that there has not been any significant change.
So that statistic sounds a little bit confounding to me. So if overall calls are down 23% or 29% from last year this time, but burglary, robbery, domestic violence are the same as last year or not significantly different?
That's the information that I have.
Okay, so it's calls other than those that are going down, but the important thing is those have not gone up?
No.
Okay.
So related to our permit counter, as I mentioned, the permit counter is open, but once again, we encourage our residents to be calling in and to our businesses to contact our staff beforehand and try to do as much of the work as we possibly can by electronically or by phone. Public works, our construction work, our CIP work goes uninterrupted. You probably have seen that our construction crews have been busy. The governor's order specifically identified construction as 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 essential service for the community, so those activities are moving on uninterrupted. We have also, we have not seen any interruptions in the operations and maintenance work that we do in the community. So things like the potholes, patching, the litter and graffiti abatement, street signage, sign signal operation, landscape maintenance, those all are moving along as planned, as scheduled, without any any disruptions. We have had some changes related to our trash collection and trash pickup, and this is important for the community to know. There will be some written follow-up, and there would be some information that will be shared with the community. The Republic, as part of the safety precautions for their employees, did notify us that the bulky item collection program has been suspended, so until further notice. This what this means that we ask our residents to not put items in front of their homes. This is the this is the program that we had where residents could call in for the pickup of bulky items and ask for the service. That service until further notice is suspended, and we ask that our residents discontinue that program for the time being.
What's the what's the logic of that change?
The logic was it was a decision that was made at the company level. As as you know, Republic Services is a large international company, and they have been trying to avoid their employees getting out of the truck, interacting with possibly the members of the public, touching the garbage, because the bulk the bulky item pickup is different than picking up a garbage can that can be done mechanically. This for this for this service, they have to get out and they have to touch the garbage. And they they prefer not to do that as part of the agreement with the with the labor union.
I got a couple of calls from people who had appointments, but they were told that there were about 120 appointments which were set up, which have been canceled for now. It made it kind of difficult because some of those, most of the people had things that are on the streets already, and they were thinking, oh, what do I put it now, you know?
Right. Yeah, that's, and I know Steve Herringman is online if if he can answer any of the specific questions. We are still working with them. We're still trying to to connect with their some of their management team and to see if there is any way that we could provide some of those services for the time being. And another thing that I would like to add related to the garbage or the the trash pickup, the curbside collection of batteries, sharps has also been suspended for the same reason.
Yeah, I think just from a some scientific point of view, the risk of virus on a pile of stuff sitting in the street is pretty low. Sunshine and this virus don't get along very well, like any like any envelope virus. I understand their concern. You know, you see an awful lot of concern in the in the region, in the nation, not all that's particularly scientifically well-founded. If there's a way to deal with the situation Bob just mentioned, you know, we don't want piles of trash sitting in the street for 90 days or six months, however long they and their union decide not to pick the big trash up, we definitely have to deal with stuff that's already out there, I would say, in some way.
No, we, that's that point is well-taken. One of the things that we are not discontinuing is illegal dumping. So this, our teams would be dealing with illegal dumping. This is the scheduled pickup that we're asked to suspend, not the illegal dumping.
So any of those scheduled items that were out there and then canceled, I think the advice to people would be that we'll have to deal with that as basically illegal dumping crew would have to go pick it up instead of have the regular waste taller do it?
Let's hope it doesn't come to that. We're asking for residents' patience as as we work through this.
But in the circumstance he mentioned, it's already out.
If it's already out, then we have to deal with it as illegal dumping and and deal with it.
Yeah, but the customer isn't held as doing a crime by having it out there is not illegal dumping.
Correct.
It's it's an awkward kind of a situation. We had the two people that I had, they were taken care of because they had been already been out there, and I've seen that little team that you see out there, that little first machine that goes out and scoops it up and puts it in with the garbage can behind them and like that, that's still out on a few spots. Maybe they're finishing up some things they have to complete, maybe some of the illegal dumping you're talking about.
So we'll we'll continue working on this. It's one of those things that we were notified by the company that it's a service to protect their employees. They want to discontinue. They, we also heard some, in fact, some rumors that got out that even the illegal dumping may have been affected by this. I just wanted to assure the community that we will not allow the piles of garbage to sit on our streets for for a long time. We will deal with those. On the on the code enforcement side, we are continuing.
One question?
Yes.
I have my hand up. I don't know if you guys can see that. I was just going to comment on a couple of things. One, I would imagine that with so many people at home, our calls for these would go through the roof with people.
That's right.
With idle hands wanting to clean out their garages, and the demand for this would be really enormous.
I would think so.
Yeah, so I would just think that at this point, you know, at some point, again, this is going to become a health crisis, and, you know, making sure that we have enough staff just to pick up the normal trash is the essential service that we want to make sure that we're preserving here, you know? As much as, yes, we want to do these bulky pickups, I can only imagine if my wife wasn't painting our house, she would have been cleaning out the garage and doing one of these.
Yeah, people have remarked on how busy Home Depot is or Lowe's, because so many people are undertaking all those household projects that they put off for months or years. Now they're home all the time, they feel like they have time to do it, and they just have to need to do it. So I think you're exactly, I think you're exactly right.
I mean, if you if you take my bank for example, we've lowered our hours. I know Chase Bank has closed like 1,000 branches just to prepare so that they have enough staff to cover the most critical areas, so that when people do go out, that they still have enough of a crew to cover. It's going to be no different for Republic at some point, and so the services that we don't have to do right now, we shouldn't be doing, so that we make sure that we're still picking up recycling and garbage every day.
One thing that we are providing for our residents, that we are allowing additional trash pickup, recognizing that many people are staying home and that they may be collecting more trash than usual. By calling Republic at 638-9000, you could ask for additional trash pickup on your on the day of your your regular day of trash pickup. So that's an additional service that they provide. Yes, as long as it can fit in a garbage can. Yes.
Well, no, so so garbage, you can only fit it in the can. I know that with our like our lease and stuff, you can put extra bags out. Are you saying that, will they bring you a bigger can for no, just?
Yeah.
Or they allow you to put more bags?
Can you unmute Steve? Let's see if we can unmute Steve Herringman so he can he can speak to this issue.
I'd be really interested in how how that would apply.
So we'll come back to this. We, I know Steve is online, and we tried to unmute him to so so he can get his some of specific comments.
But that number was 638-9000?
638-9000.
Okay.
Steve?
I've unmuted. Can you hear me?
All right, go.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, Steve, so the question is, we just heard we're not going to do bulky, but we can do extra. So then the question is, what what does that mean? What is extra?
Yeah, that's a great question. So on your regular garbage pickup day, you can call Republic if you have extra waste in your garbage can. So not bulky items and not in the recycling or the yard waste, but the the residential trash routes are really heavy right now. So Republic, if you call them on your regular pickup day, they will come back at no charge and service the garbage can.
It will come a second time?
A second time?
A second time, right. So once your can has been, you have additional material that you weren't able to get collected, you can call, and they will they will do that at no charge.
Okay. That sounds like a happy medium.
Yeah. Residents can also deliver bulky items to the Elder Creek Transfer Station at no charge.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't work for a lot of people because they have to haul it there, but at least it's some concession. If people have a way to haul materials, they can deliver it to Elder Creek at no charge. And the illegal dumping pickup will continue, I mean, we, we simply cannot allow that to be suspended. And so if there's illegally dumped materials in the roadway, those will continue to get picked up.
Very good. Thank you.
It's, it's something like that should be put in, whatever it would cost us to put in the paper, to have that. Because that's the first I heard of, of saying you can extra pick up on your regular garbage day. That's great, but it would be, and not too many people know about that. So I think that's something we can educate the public on that also. Because maybe that would help them with their idea of the, you can't pick up, get the bulk pickup anymore, but you can have an extra pickup on your garbage day.
And Cyrus, I think I heard you say you've got communications coming out to that effect.
A flyer is going out. Steve, I believe the flyer is going out tomorrow, correct?
The flyer is going out on Wednesday.
Wednesday.
And actually, that information is not being included in the flyer. And the reason is that operationally, it's very difficult for Republic to do that. And if we advertise it, you know, we may get a huge response and they wouldn't be able to service it operationally. So if somebody's, you know, really needs the extra service and they call, then they will be offered that service.
So if they're on that?
So if I, if they call in to ask for a bulky pickup, they'll be offered this service instead?
Yeah, that's correct. Or if they call and just say, you know, I have extra trash, what do I do? If we were to really advertise it widely and, you know, 30% or something of the people called, then they would be in trouble operationally. And, you know, what we don't want to do is be in a situation where we can't service the routes. And the residential routes are very heavy at the moment.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get back to, Steve, is
Right.
biggest fear here is that we can't pick up the trash or the recycling in a given week. And what things we need to do to ensure that, I think is, is okay or fine. And for the ancillary services that we normally could offer, may not be as great as they normally are. But we need to make sure that, that, you know, the core service of picking up the trash happens every week.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that, that will continue. And part of the good news is the commercial routes are very light at the moment. So, you know, they have additional resources. But absolutely, I mean, weekly trash pickup cannot be interrupted. And, and we've had assurances from Republic that it will not be interrupted.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Cyrus, you have more?
Yes, so a few items about, a few comments about the code enforcement. Our code enforcement is, as far as the residential neighborhoods, is continuing on a proactive basis. Our code enforcement officers are driving through our neighborhoods to check on health, safety issues. We're not, we are proactive related to those items. But at this point, given the crisis and given the situation that's going on, we are handling resident complaints mostly on the basis of those, the criteria of health and safety. If they are not truly health and safety issues, if it's a dispute between two neighbors, we probably ask the residents to somehow be patient, work it, work it amongst themselves until that we have the ability to, to be able to deal with that. Related to our commercial enforcement, we have increased our presence in the commercial communities given that we, many of our businesses have slowed down and many of our businesses are also struggling with the compliance with the county order. We have decided not to take a heavy-handed approach in enforcement of the county rules. What we do is we have focused all of our efforts in educating our businesses about the reasons that they need to stay away and not, not to congregate, why restaurants have to be closed, why they cannot take the, take the customers in. We have had some, the same issue with some bars and some other, some other businesses that we've seen congregation of some customers. But we're not, we're not sending our police officers. We're dealing with them with all of those violations through, through our code enforcement officer and mostly through a very gentle and soft education as we understand the difficulties that they're facing in this difficult time. Our animal services is also responding to calls as necessary. The, one of the things that we need to highlight is that SPCA has limited their services because of the crisis. So we have some limitations, not because of our own, because of SPCA. And, and we are, we ask that they work closely with our animal enforcement, animal officers to handle their issues and their concerns. As you mentioned, as the council member has talked about this, we have also taken a number of initiatives with our members of nonprofit, our faith-based, our community organizations. And we've also done a great deal of work in dealing with the business community. Being a facilitator, we've been a convener. We have provided some information. As an example, we have a call that we have worked very closely with Chamber of our, our Chamber of Commerce, with Congressman Abi Bera, that Mayor Sanders will be facilitating this Wednesday. So we have done a great deal of work. And at this point, I'm going to ask Micah Runner to run through some of those, some of the examples related to those types of activities.
Sure. Thank you, Cyrus. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things. One, on the community resource side and organization that's happening and then the other on the business resource side. So first on the community side, wanted to just quickly thank the Stacy Delaney, Lori Ann Ohm and Megan Siren who've been working with that group. This group started a few weeks ago when this first started happening, the crisis first began and got a, a group of 60-plus folks invited from the community together. Very quickly learned that bringing 60 people together was not what we did anymore with, with the new environment. But this group continues to, to meet and to get together on a regular basis, mostly with a core group and a core task force that's being managed and organized a little bit by, by city staff who's coordinating with the group, the food locker, the community council, the interfaith council and the Folsom Cordova School District. So those groups continue to meet on a regular basis. There's an ongoing conversation with them. They, they are identifying issues, resources that are out there and trying to coordinate that with the, with the nonprofit and the faith-based community to meet the needs of, of the community as, as well as they can. This is happening, as an example of that is Blessings in a Backpack that has continued to serve the community for weekend food. And basically their needs have gone up quite a bit in serving the community. And it's now doing that distribution where they used to do it at the schools, is now doing it at the food locker. But through those conversations with this group has found those partnerships that have made those opportunities in meeting the community's needs where they're needed with, with the different partners. This is also where you'll see the Just Serve Volunteer Group who's basically organizing, this, this membership group is organizing the Just Serve website where if you look at the Just Serve website, type in the zip code for Rensh Cordova, you'll see opportunities that will come up to finding the needs or meeting the needs of the community, whether it's through hygiene, resource kits, things that are being distributed through the community, food drives where they can match the community needs with those who have the needs to, to supply. And so that's really a, a broad, and, and really the city is playing a convener, an organizing role of trying to meet those folks together, bring them together, solve issues, find issues and the, and the community itself can, can solve those issues a lot of those times. One other thing to highlight is, is the other thing that this group does is really fulfill the backend of the, of the website, where the city website, where you have the resources page for the community resources, where you see activities, activities that are listed there. So as Mayor Sanders talked about, the reading of the, of the books and those things, you'll see some of those activities that are on this page for just bringing different things to the community that they can do. You'll also see childcare and preschools listed. So if, if folks need childcare, there's listed there of where different places are, food pantries, family counseling, basically all the resources that you think that you could need in the community is being listed there. And this group is working on fulfilling those on our own city website and city webpage where they're, where they're being listed. And so you see a variety of those things on, on the city website. And basically it's an ongoing effort as new issues come up every day and new solutions are, are out there every day. And so that's a resource page that's continually updated. And as you hear things in the community or if you hear things happening that's not on there, please let us know as, as we want to keep that as updated as possible. The other thing that's happening with, with this group is we're having increased future conversations, as Councilmember Terry said, with the, with the Elk Grove School District. With all of our school districts, we're having pretty more robust and ongoing conversations with them as, as this is an impact to the community. And as we, one of those examples of something positive that happened is through those conversations, our Ranch Cordova Promise Program kids were able to receive Chromebooks in order to continue to do their, do their lessons and do the online activities. And that was an outcome of some of those ongoing conversations that are happening. So lots of things happening, staying plugged into the community needs and trying to, to connect those to the resources that exist in the community that wants to solve it. And so that's, those are things happening on the community support side, just briefly.
Good. Are you working at all with nonprofits in Ranch Cordova that are going to be displaced, have events canceled or, or incomes significantly distressed, let's say, or, or seasons canceled? You know, like U Sports has seasons canceled, other nonprofits have events canceled. There is relief apparently in some federal legislation that might apply to them, but they might need some assistance in identifying that or applying for that. Have you, have we done anything in that regard?
So, so not specifically, but I will say when we talk about the business side, I'd almost include those almost in the business resources that are out there. And as we talk about the different options, it's really trying to connect those partners or those local folks to those other resources that are out there. But I haven't heard anything specific in this, in the community resource side about those. But we should know and we'd love to, to hear about those issues so that we can try to connect.
Those local nonprofits are our partners. In many cases, we fund them. And, and in this case, we, you know, they're part of our community. They do a very important job for us. So we're, we're the financial backstop is the city basically for them. But if there's federal relief available for them, that's, that's good for us as a city because it takes us out of the 100% backstop position for those organizations. So facilitating their applications to whatever relief may be available is definitely in our, our interest.
Mayor Sanders, if I may, related to the nonprofits, the federal stimulus packet, the way it came out, it targeted cities over 500,000 population. And we have been working very closely with the league and also our national, our, our federal lobbyists to address this issue because many, the, the program as it's designed today does not provide for direct funding to the cities and nonprofits. And I've had a discussion with Congressman Bera. He's, he's well aware of it. He's also heard that from other cities in the region. There's only one city that's over 500,000 people, population in, in our region. So it's a real problem for everybody else. So this is an issue that's being addressed and we hope that the federal program is able to address it.
And that's not one of those things where, you know, we had a problem years ago when we were talking about the transportation money and like that. That was, the federal government was giving it to the state. So the state knows how to use it. Well, not really. That, you know, we needed to have it go to the cities. So, because they know where the potholes are and everything and things like that. Same thing with this. Is there, there's nothing in that about going through the state and then having the state give it to the cities? It's just you have 500,000 plus to get it and no one else does?
I think the plan is that it will ultimately trickle down through the state to the counties and to the cities. But we don't have great faith that it will ultimately be anything meaningful. So, so some work needs to be done.
Question with Micah also about the Promise Program we have for Folsom Lake College. Is that, how is that being done with the, I know, I'm sure it's shut down like all the other schools are, but how are they getting that assistance now for the students who are going to Folsom Lake College?
Well, as, as far as my understanding, they're continuing to offer online education. I think what we partnered with Folsom Lake College to do is actually get them the resources they might need to continue to do those online education courses. And so I think it's finding the tools that they need to be successful. But as far as my understanding is, they're continuing to go to the classes and participate in the program as, as Folsom Lake College is still operating.
That's correct. The, the program is uninterrupted. Part of, part of the funding that we had set aside, we agreed and we discussed with Folsom Lake College to provide Chromebooks for the 50-some-plus students that were participating in the program.
Donald, I see your hand up.
Yeah, well, let me, let me start on the Chromebook thing in the Folsom Lake College. The one thing, the, the one thing I, hopefully we can, and again, this isn't an on-your-honor system, but I'm going to be amazed. I'm sure there are some students that don't have laptops. But most students of that age, you know, aside from a smartphone, the next thing they would open would usually be a laptop of some sort. So let's make sure that it's get, it's getting into the hands of the kids that need it, not the kids that want another laptop. Because I feel like I, just from some of my experience and what I'm hearing from the public schools is a lot of that demand is students that have the resources, but they can get one of these for free for a while. They may not return it. And so that is my, my concern. Going back David to your comment about nonprofits, I just wanted to say that in, in the stimulus package, the payment protection program, the disaster relief program that was the 50 billion prior to any of the stimulus packages, really treated nonprofits exactly like small businesses. So when it comes to access to capital, and again, a lot of the money that's flowing into the state that's going to flow into local governments, it's going to be for us to deliver core services, police, water, right, all of those, all of our normal city services. You know, if there are nonprofits out there that are struggling to make payroll or have lost some income, but were really strong the end of last year, right, so they, they had a surplus, they, they built reserves, they were in a good position at the end of the year, and that's not all nonprofits, but the ones that were would probably qualify for the payment, the paycheck protection program and the disaster relief program. And this is kind of my comment that we had last time. You know, we don't want to be aiming to be the gun of the freight train. The federal government has access to capital that we just will never be able to do. And, and I, again, I don't want to get into 12.1 because I have accused myself, but we are not in the business of lending and, I mean, yes, we fund nonprofits, but we are not, most nonprofits like their entire budget, nor do we want to be. And so where they, they qualify for those things and a lot of the federal resources, nonprofits will qualify just like a small business would, just like a restaurant or anybody else would. So we should really try and direct them there.
So, so I'm actually, that's a good lead-in to the, to the business support side. And just by way of an update, there was only less than 10% of the Promise Program students needed a laptop. So it wasn't a hundred percent. It was only less than 10% received, received laptops. But I, I appreciate that, Donald, as far as the lead-in on the, basically all of the programs that are out there and trying to figure out, and this is really on the business support side. So really what we found ourselves doing in the first couple of weeks is, is really being a triaged type of activity, connecting our local businesses, whether it's nonprofit, for-profit, the community who's seeing a pretty drastic impact in their ability to survive, trying to connect them to this, these resources that are out there. And so that's really what we spent the first couple of weeks doing is trying to figure out. And these new resources that were coming in basically weekly or daily as, as the different programs were announced and the different programs that were still being offered and new ones still continue to come out. So I think that's what a lot of the time on the economic development side we're spending doing is trying to remain up to speed on all of those different programs so that we connect those in the community to those folks who need it. With that being said, I think one of the things that we're going to be announcing soon is actually utilizing some resources to actually help, help businesses through the process and, and being a resource of people who can really understand and know all the different federal programs, all the different state programs that are out there and having some resources that we have through contracts that can help staff kind of help those businesses be successful. Those resources are coming. They're coming in different ways. Those resources are coming, they're coming in different ways, and trying to stay on top of that. We have some expertise in the community and in the region that we could utilize to do that. And that's not only in partnership with the Ranch Cordova Chamber of Commerce, but all the resources that are out there too that we know exist. And so I think that's one of the main things that we're going to look at moving forward is how do we bring resources to us so that we can actually help these businesses find those different activities that are out there and available. So part of that actually work, and thank you Cyrus for mentioning, the code enforcement is the education and outreach program. That really is a coordination with the Economic Development Department as well. And so as we're out, as the code enforcement officers are out in the community, there's lots of dialogue and conversation with our economic development team, making sure that the information is provided to them, providing them resources, providing them other information about how to help their business survive this difficult time. And so that's a lot of what that effort is around economic development at this point. Some of the other examples or some of the things that are happening, I don't know if you saw, recently we have the Ranch Cordova Delivers Program, which was utilizing one of our local grocery stores and helping to pay for delivery charges for them. We're working with our other grocery locals, some of our other grocery stores to implement that program, other places as well. But that's something trying to provide for both the business community and the residential community together. Some of the other things that will happen is a business resource kit coming out soon. So not only is having kind of hand-holding type experience and folks to help get through the different dynamic of processes and opportunities that are out there, but also having some good cheat sheets as far as where they go, whether, if they're a single owner, operator, and they don't have employees, they can get unemployment, they can go other areas to get access. There's also, some of these funding and programs are finite in time, and so making sure that we're getting the information out there is, these are sometimes competitive programs too, so we want to make sure that folks are in on the ground floor of some of these programs and making sure they have the right information to be successful. And Cyrus mentioned the roundtable with Congressman Bera, that's happening later this week in the SBA to help provide additional answers and resources to the community. We've also, just thank you for approving tonight, the Lift Program is another resource that's provided for the community to use and to access the capital that the city has to be utilized in the city, is that those who are affected by the coronavirus. And then also, just, we have extended kind of grace period for our business license program and things out past 90 days, making sure we're not being overly regulatory on those who need extension and things on their business licenses. So all of those things being said, both the community side and the business resources side are continuing to be updated on this, on the city's website, and so that's continuing to evolve. If you looked at the website two days ago, it probably looked like it had more or different information than it has now. And I think part of that is in partnership, and a lot of that is in partnership with our communications team, and I think that's a big portion of all of these efforts being out and provided in the community. And I think what I'd like to do, if there's no other questions on any of those business things, is hand it off to Maria to talk about the communication strategy pieces.
Okay.
I do have a question.
All right, Linda.
Yeah, so my concern was about the independent small business person, independent contractor, I mean legitimately independent contractor. And I think, Micah, you just answered the question that the most logical program for them would be just basic unemployment.
Correct.
But so is, so do they go to the city website to find out the basic principles of unemployment insurance, or what?
So I think we have links on our city website, but ultimately that would be through EDD, and that's partly why we'd like to, for those who really are going to struggle in finding the right resources, is to bring on this additional resource to actually help people solve those problems for existing capacity. So I think the website's good, the EDD website is good, we're going to have a resource toolkit that's going to have all this information on it for depending on what kind of business they are. And so those things are, I would start with our website, and if they don't see it, please call, you know, our economic development team, and they can help find the right spot.
Okay. I don't mean to laugh, but you should read the article this morning about people trying to contact EDD. It's not pretty.
Right.
So, but thank you, I got it.
Okay, Maria.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Maria Nista with the Communications and Public Affairs Department. This evening, we wanted to give you a brief overview of what's happening on the communications side as it relates to our response to COVID-19 and the coronavirus. We started in a very different place on, several weeks ago, but where we are right now is in education and inspiration strategy mode for both our internal and our external communications. And what that means is our primary focuses are in two different areas, that providing residents and businesses with key information, whether that's health information or information for their businesses, information for their families, whatever that may be, there's a lot of information that we are providing to educate them. And then on the other side of things, we are also providing them with a sense of community because there is really some magical things happening here in our community with regard to the response from everyone on COVID-19 and coronavirus. It is really bringing our community together in some very inspiring ways. So first on the external piece of things, as you know, we launched a coronavirus webpage. It is extremely comprehensive. If you haven't had an opportunity to take a look at it, please do. As Micah mentioned, it's morphing every day, it's updated almost hourly. We have changed it from a basic webpage, it now is many pages deep and features a number of buttons so that it's very easy for those who go there to navigate. I thought it would be interesting for you this evening to learn that since we launched the webpage on March 13th, the webpage has been visited over 12,000 times. To give you some context, that's more than double our regular monthly homepage visits. And the majority of visits, 72%, have been on mobile devices, followed by desktop and then tablet. And that is, it's the complete opposite of what it normally is. It's normally desktop and then phones, but I think because so many people are home, they're going to their phones first. Since March 13th, we've expanded the webpage to multiple pages. The top five pages that are being visited are first, the coronavirus page, which is our initial page, then our Open for Business page, which I'll talk about that effort in a moment, followed by Resources for Residents, our Activities page, and then our Resources for Businesses. There are three ways people are finding our webpage. This is through Google and other search engines. So it's, Mr. Mayor, I know you've always been interested in terms of where are, we are in our search engine optimization, and then that's followed by Facebook and other partnering agency websites, and then of course, direct traffic to the website itself. Finally, I thought it would be important to note that we do have our updates from the city manager in four languages on our website, English, Spanish, Russian, and Farsi. Last week, we expanded the availability of these materials, given the information about some of the illnesses in our Russian community. And so you'll see when you first land on that coronavirus webpage, the first thing you see are the four options for languages. But it's worthy of noting that our website is powered by Google Translate, so if you speak a different language other than those four languages, you can click a button and the website will be translated for you into the language of your choice. There's over 100. We are also embarking on, as you know, we do a lot of social media, but we, these have fallen into two different buckets also, campaigns and then proactive education. Again, this is really key information, and then what we now call our Ranch Cordova Inspires, where, as I had told you about last week, we are using a hashtag right now to aggregate all of the positive stories that are coming out of our city. We're also on the media relations front correcting any misinformation that exists out there, of which there was a little bit last week, so thank you to those of you who reached out about that, we were able to correct that. We also have been using this to talk about our proactive program, including Rancher Delivers, Our City Hall Storytime, Ranch Cordova Inspires, and then after tonight, our Lift Program. We've also been providing a number of community updates, we've done seven so far across all of our channels, and we'll be providing a new one this week. We've been doing a lot of videos with the mayor, who, as serendipity would have it, is also a virologist. And I think that probably a mayor and a virologist doesn't exist anywhere else in perhaps the world. So these videos are going to start morphing, and thank you, David, for being willing to experiment with some live, Facebook lives instead of videos. And the reason for that is what's happening is the minute we record a video with the mayor, it's almost outdated because new information has come to life. And so now our strategy will be doing these via Facebook livestream, so we'll be starting that this week. In addition to that, we are, I mentioned our Open for Business effort. This was a partnership with the Ranch Cordova Chamber, our Economic Development Team, as well as Ranch Cordova Travel and Tourism. And basically what this is, is a comprehensive list of all of our businesses that are open. We're trying to encourage them, and you'll see some more of them featured on social media. And then finally, on the external front, communications front, based on some information that we received last week about a focus of illnesses here in our Russian community, we launched a two-pronged approach to get information out to that community. First, what we did was we met with some people who are leaders in this community to determine what information resonates with them and how best to communicate with them. And so we're taking this in both a grassroots approach as well as a paid media approach. So our paid media is now launched, and so what we have going in the Russian community right now is information in the three newspapers that serve that community. There was an electronic newsletter that went out to them. We have several banner ads that are running where people can click through to our coronavirus webpage and go right to that Russian language button and receive information. We're also posting daily on their social media channel. And then coming up, we'll be doing some live video updates with the Russian community as well as some targeted web advertising. This along with a grassroots approach, which uses the influencers and leaders in this community to help us, as an entree to help us get information to the community, has been working very well. Everything is up and running, it started on Thursday, and I can say by today, everything is fully up and running. And then on the internal communications front, very quickly, Cyrus has been providing city staff with multitude of updates. He's going to be moving to live streaming those updates as well so that they're more in real time. We've provided our city staff with a comprehensive Q and A so that they can keep up on the latest information. As you know, they have a lot of information coming at them, and so we aggregated all of this information from trusted sources so that they know that they have the most accurate and timely information. We're updating our outgoing voicemails so that people understand about our modified services. And on a fun note, we have been videotaping ourselves reading stories so that families and others who are cooped up at home can have story time for their kids, or if you're an adult and you just want a good laugh, you can watch them too. And that's my update. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Maria. Questions for Maria? Okay. What, Maria, what can we do as councilmembers to amplify your efforts?
That's a great question. So a couple of things. One is, I've noticed that the posts on social media that get shared the most obviously have an amplified presence on social media. You can add the Facebook frame that we developed, which says, "Share your story," and then it has our hashtag, Ranch Cordova Inspires, you can add that to your profile photo. You can continue to send us the good news stories. You've all done that, which I, you know, we really appreciate. And, you know, just continue sharing the information that we're providing because we're pulling it from trusted sources. And then if people in the community ask you for information, you can send them to the webpage.
You could consider giving us a daily or every other day to-do list along those lines with a little bit of specifics in it. I think most of us are capable of doing that on our own. We just need sort of the reminder and maybe the, you know, the high priority to-dos to actually get sort of deeper into our community. Because I know I do it, but it's frankly on a sporadic basis. You know, if I see a tweet from the city, for example, it'll pop up on my watch, it's very easy for me to hit retweet. I'm not a daily Facebook user, I'm probably a weekly Facebook user, so my odds of, you know, doing the best thing from the city's perspective is going to be a little random there unless I'm prompted to do it. And it probably goes, some version of that probably goes for all of us. But I'm sure we're all also happy to help. I mean, we've all volunteered basically for these jobs and are pursuing them to the best of our abilities. We just need to be as informed as we can about those actions we take on social media.
Sure, we would be happy to send you a to-do list.
And not, not super complicated, I don't want to spend two hours drafting this email to us, but you know, sort of punchy and hey, here's three things, or whatever it is, here's three things you can do. Any other councilmember questions, comments?
Actually, I have a question about the, we have a sample of this hand sanitizer that J.J. Pfister is putting out. Where can the public purchase these, or when will they be able to?
That's one of our great stories. Right? Don't we have, we have another distillery as well, both of our distilleries.
Two distilleries in Ranch Cordova that are making their hand sanitizers or making them available to the public.
Where and how?
Maria, would you?
Seven dollars, but where do you buy it?
It's at J.J. Pfister.
Looks like this.
Yeah, Gold River Distillery off of Sunrise Boulevard, and J.J. Pfister are both by now carrying it. Our household is stocked up.
Did you only get the hand sanitizer while you were there? No, never mind, never.
No, I did not. There's no reason to go there. It's my just hand sanitizer. The torture of local small businesses.
All right.
So Mr. Mayor, I just have a few.
Thank you, Maria, that was awesome.
Thank you very much, Maria and Micah. Just a few closing remarks that I would like to make. First of all, I don't think we did not mention another measure that the city council approved, and that was the moratorium on evictions for both residential and commercial properties. That was an urgency ordinance that the council approved. And the one final comment that I would like to make is that, you know, many, many years ago, somebody told me that the true test and strength of an organization comes through during the time of crisis. And I have to say that what I have observed in the last few weeks, something that we had not at all expected or anticipated, this is truly a crisis that has affected every facet of our community and personal lives. And what I have observed from the city staff and the team that we have stepping up to the plate, and some of our roles are visible, you see us doing the work, but we also have a large number of people that are in the background, that work, you know, that continue running this city. And I could not be more proud of this team and the work that we have accomplished, and a heartfelt thanks to all of them for the work they have done. It's hard to believe that we are such a small, but we are definitely a mighty team that has been able to do a great deal of work and good service to our community. So we're proud, and we thank you, city council, for your support. We still have a lot of work to do. This is, this is just, we still don't know where we're going. And as the next step, we also know that this crisis, and definitely on some of the aftermath of the crisis, will have some financial implications. And we don't yet fully know. And we don't yet fully know what they are. We don't know the impact of the city finances. And, but we are working on getting you some estimates, so you are current on the latest information. And at the next council meeting, we'll be presenting some high-level financial overview to the best of our knowledge, because this is an ever-evolving story, changes all the time. And the one other thing that we also need to be mindful, and we're looking forward to hear what the new order from the county will be. The existing order expires tomorrow on April 7th, and we're expecting that a new order will come out. We don't yet know if it's going to be different from the existing one, whether it's going to be more restrictive or less restrictive. So that's another piece of information that we need to be sending out to you and to the community. But all in all, thank you. And once again, my heartfelt appreciation for the great team that we have and the work that we've done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That was a great discussion. Last thing on our agenda is a discussion of future agenda items. Does anyone have a future agenda item they'd like to discuss? I'll just say at this point, we are going to have some future discussions, not just as a city, but as a region, about what public health looks like moving past this wave that we're in. This, the apex or the peak of our hospitalizations in California, and certainly in Sacramento County, looks like it's going to be at the end of this month, or perhaps all the way through the middle of May, somewhere in that time period. It looks to be much less than what we worried about. In other words, we've succeeded by social distancing and flattening that curve and getting that peak moved out of the range of possibility. But moving forward, that's going to leave a large percent of our population without having had exposure to the virus and therefore vulnerable to it. So in order to mitigate that risk until a vaccine arrives, measures are going to have to be taken. And I can't really predict exactly what those are going to look like. I have some ideas sort of on the edges of what the options might be. There might be a containment strategy where everyone is tested and tested regularly, and then cases that are discovered are sort of quarantined and all of their contacts are sorted out. In that scenario, we would be tested a lot with serology tests that are just now becoming available in the world. We would also probably still have to continue limiting our contact with each other, just for risk of sharing a virus with a large bunch of the population that will have been unexposed. That's one scenario. Another scenario is that this, there will be another wave of this disease that will strike some point in the, in the future of the fall. And then we will have to decide again, how do we lock down to ride that one out, and how necessary are the different measures? So it's, my point is, for future agenda, there's, there's a lot of uncertainty going forward about what the new normal is going to look like once we get past this current wave. We're doing a great job now. Everyone's to be congratulated for that. But this is not, like I probably said early on in this, this is not a short-term situation. This is a two-year process. We should probably think in terms of that, until there's a vaccine that's been developed, approved, works, and everyone gets it. So until then, there's going to be various modifications to, let's call it the PC world, the pre-coronavirus world. And I don't have any specific agenda item on that. I just wanted to sort of make everyone aware that we have to think in those terms.
I'm just going to ask you about your personal opinion of that, was it coming fall or something like that? Have you seen any of the tests that have been coming on? You would see it much more out of it than I would. We could see the same thing, but being a virologist, you would know maybe a little bit more about, is that something you think really can be successful in the near future? Or is it something you're looking back a couple of years down the road, like you said?
A vaccine?
Yeah.
You know, from the time we said go as a nation to work on that, it's probably a 12-month at the absolute minimum, probably 18 months more likely, probably two years is the safest bet for having a vaccine. I mean, right now, you could know that you had a candidate vaccine that worked, and there's several out there that may work, but they've got to go through several rounds of testing, animal testing, small-scale human testing, larger-scale human testing, get approved by the FDA, and then manufactured. So you have Johnson &amp; Johnson already planning to make a billion doses of something, but they don't know what it is. They have to get through the original steps to say, that's the one we're going to use as the vaccine. But they are already scaling themselves up to make a billion doses of something with federal government support today. It's just they can't execute on that until we know what it is. So it's a, it's a process we have to go through. Maybe we could get an antiviral done before then, but even then, you've got to mass manufact, you've got to go through those same testing phases, and you also have to be able to manufacture it, which takes time.
It's going to be interesting to see how long people can stay home without going a little more stressful, you know?
Yeah, I think, you know, economically, some modifications have to be made. We don't know exactly what the economic toll is, but it's big. I heard an estimate, someone said a trillion dollars a month for this slowdown of activity. That's, that's a lot of lost opportunity. That can't be sustained for months and months and months on end. So we'll have to find safe ways to modify our behavior. It might mean, I don't even know if I want to speculate, but it might mean we can't do big group functions. We can't do sports. You can't fill up an auditorium for any purpose, but you can go back to work. You know, that's sort of a, some sort of a balance. You can go to a restaurant if the tables are eight feet apart, you know? I don't know. There might be some, some accommodations like that, but I'm just speculating. But my, my main message here is keep an open mind about what's coming in the future, because it's not going to look like life was a couple of months ago.
Yeah. And with countries around the world in the same situation, you've got Spain telling everybody to stay home, you've got Italy telling everybody to stay home, and heaven knows what else is going on the rest of the, rest of the world, you know? It's not just here. That's one of the things, it's affecting everyone in the world. So it's not just, you know, Rancho Codo, it's not just the United States, it's everyone in the world. So it's, it's something that's, again, we never had before. So it's, you know, that in 1917, I think, we had that Asian flu that killed over 600,000 people in the United States and millions around the world.
Right.
But then that was a different kind of situation. You didn't have the communication we have now. You didn't have anything that we've got today to kind of level things out. Things just went up and peaked, and millions of people were killed. So we're doing it a little bit better now, but we're still wondering, okay, what do I do next?
Yeah, this has been a big surprise for, for a lot of people. I'd say in the public health community, the virology community, we've always known this was possible. Likely is probably how most of my colleagues would probably describe it, some point in our, in our lifetime. But getting government to a point where we could prepare for that is difficult, because, I mean, literally, the state of California, the state of New York, could have invested heavily in everything that we're now, you know, view as a shortage, but they've chosen not to do that. Basically, because there wasn't political motivation or will to do it. The risk wasn't recognized. I can tell you now, going forward, that risk will probably be recognized, you know, exactly how big that infectious disease risk is. Because just because we beat SARS doesn't mean the next one. You know, the next SARS III doesn't come along. South Korea has seen it with SARS I, and they were sort of staffed up and prepared and knew how to test and knew how to do, deploy a lot of public health resources out in the field. They were able to do that, and that's why they have mitigated it to the point they have. But you look at any other westernized nation, they haven't had that level of success. And it's for the very reason that none of us were that, were that prepared. And if anything, in the United States, we're really lucky right now in the depth of our healthcare that we have available to us. Because if you look at like the per capita ICU beds available, we have far, far, far more than countries of socialized medicine. They, they have very low numbers. Their, their delta for what they need to take care of their population is far greater than us, almost like, like by a factor of 10. So you think our difficulties are difficult. You know, you look at European democracies, and they've, they've got a far more difficult road to go.
Let me ask you this, since you're our leading virologist, and I didn't get all those questions answered. At this point, when you look at the fact that California is actually giving away 500 ventilators, is that one of the precursor signs that we're starting to limit? Is that, because we don't get to hear any good news, and Bob and I are remarking about how we never get to hear any good news about anything, and we're just waiting for them to be like, either it's done, or okay. But is that like the precursor to us flattening the curve? Is the fact that we're getting rid of the ventilator equipment or moving it on?
Yes, that's exactly how you should read that. Things are not going to be as bad here as they could have been, because we flattened the curve, so we're able to release some of that equipment back to the federal government.
Thank you for being the first person to ever give me good news.
Well, mine, when I do that.
On TV, too.
But I, I don't, I don't get to monetize it, right? If you're the national news media, and you can scare everybody to think they get money out of that transaction. I don't, I don't monetize this.
You get kudos, though, from all of us for making us happy.
That doesn't mean you can relax. You should still be doing all the right things.
Well, we're giving it back to them fixed.
Yeah. Yeah, we did the maintenance. We did the maintenance on it, that's right. All right. Anything else? If there's nothing else?
I think Councilmember Terry had a question.
And Councilmember Budge.
Oh, two hands up, I see. Linda, go ahead, I see your hand up here. Virtually.
Well, I just wanted to comment, I just wanted to comment that at some point, we all need a haircut.
That's exactly right.
You've never seen an Afro like mine. You just keep this going, and this is going to be first councilman with a full-on Afro. It's just out here tapping it down with the spray. It'll happen.
You know, I got myself in an emergency situation once and had someone else trim my hair. And when I went back to the regular person, they said, what happened to you? You got run over by a lawnmower? So I suspect a lot of that may be going around soon. Donald, I see your hand up.
Well, let me start with the haircut thing. For some reason, my company locked Zoom, sorry, the camera, the camera doesn't work on this laptop. It's my work computer.
Sure.
So I've changed my head like three times since I've seen you all. But a couple of things, and I guess I would start with a question, David, that you just answered, that I wanted to ask it in a different way, was the fact that the 500 ventilators are going somewhere else is because our peak is not going to be for a while, and we're also hoping that some of the manufacturing capacity is going to come online and there'll be additional resources available soon. Like, if they're actually making more ventilators, and they might actually catch up to our peak in time, is something that I had understood.
Yeah, right now, the federal estimate is that there's no shortage of ventilator. As of, like, today, there is no shortage.
Yeah, but there's also this huge ramp-up. I heard Sacramento company just got a contract with Xerox to build a smaller ventilator system of some sort, and that they were going to be ramping up and be able to build 50,000 of them a month or something like that. So I just want to throw that out there, that was something else that I'd read. Cyrus, I had a question for you, though. You were saying that we're going to get additional guidance tomorrow from the county, but the state's shelter-in-place order still exists and supersedes anything that the county is doing. So are you talking that the county interprets what steps we need to be taking as an enforcement body of that order? Because the governor's order, doesn't it last through the end of the month?
Yes, it does. But however, the county health office has the authority to make them even more restrictive based on the local needs or local emergencies. This discussion, we've had, we've had this discussion, and I think our lawyers have determined that this, the county could in fact become, be more restrictive than the state mandate.
Okay, so there's a chance that we could be forced to do more, but we can't do any less than what the state's telling everybody else.
That is, that is correct.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. We had scheduled a work session on March 20, I'm sorry, on April 29th. And the question is whether we want to keep that or not, given, given the situation, given where we are, we thought that.
April 14th.
Did I have the wrong date? I'm sorry.
It's next week, yeah.
April 14th, yeah. April 14th. So would, is the council in favor of canceling that work session?
What was the topic?
I think the idea was to discuss some initial recommendations on Measure H. And since we.
So can I get some feedback? I would say at this point, we may push that kind of a conversation, but we should have a placeholder in case there are other things that we need to be dealing with. There's no cap to cap this month, so there's no reason to be skipping even that week if we have something that we need to do. So that's just my two cents. But I, unless you and Kim think that you've got your arms wrapped around what our budget's going to look like, we might want to pump that initial conversation for a while.
I'm for that, too. At my house, next week, we're going to be helping three of our grandkids with work and homework and schooling and like that. So I think it would be better to hold on that for a little bit.
Good thing you've got a teacher at your house, Bob.
You've got it. I mean, I'm a substitute, I'm a substitute teacher, but there's a difference between the real thing and the substitute, so.
That's what Donald and I married into. We just knew that we were going to need teachers in our lives.
Yep, yep. Garrett and Bob and I have one thing in common, we all marry smart women that are teachers.
Oh, and by the way, happy birthday, Cheryl. Yay.
That's right, happy birthday.
Dinner is on me in the garage.
And you need the city council. I'm closer to your wife right now than you are.
David?
Yes, Linda.
Okay, so yes, Donald is right. We don't know what the, what the long-term effect on the Community Enhancement Fund generation is, so we need to defer that conversation.
Okay, let's defer that meeting if there's no objection. All right, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We are adjourning it in memory of Dr., ooh, it was Wernect, right? One of the founders of Try2. Lillis Blomberg, who happened to be a neighbor of mine, but also a Parkway advocate, a local business owner, Shirley Macduff, and Josie Steelman, who was a former community leader and also a school board member here, representing Rancho Codo and the Folsom Codo District. So in memory of those four individuals, we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you. We're adjourned.